It's 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want us to hear a little voice?
I know. Perfect.
Thank you very much and welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 13th, which is our only Select Board scheduled meeting with this full agenda for the month of August. We, by request, I'm going to consider the appointment of Mr. David Tronell out of order. He has a family matter that needs to be attended to following our consideration of his appointment.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
Can we do all the appointments?
We will do all the appointments out of order if that so suits the board. Does it? Okay, we don't get a vote on that. We will take those out of order. So we will start with Mr. Tronell. David, would you go to the microphone, please?
Sure.
So, David, David and I served many years ago on school board together, so we know each other. David, thank you for volunteering for this. First of all, volunteers really are the backbone, obviously, of Reed Field and, you know, getting concentrated expertise in certain areas and just sheer volunteerism is really important to the town, so thank you so much for doing that. This is just an opportunity for you to introduce yourself to us, and if any of the board members have a question, they can ask it to you. This is not a pulling teeth Watergate-style hearing or anything of that nature. So, without further ado, if you would like to say a few words, please do.
Sure, sure. Is the microphone working?
Yes, and broadcasting, too.
So I live on Old Kinsel Road. My wife and I built a house there in 1990, and as Bruce indicated, I served on the school board for a number of years in the 90s. And when we moved to Maine around 1990, I was a financial manager for Central Maine Power Company. And in 1995, I became the CFO for Franklin Memorial Hospital System in Farmington. Then 2001, I took a position with Inland Hospital as their CFO. And then 2007, I semi-retired and started up with a business partner, a software company that's focused on some healthcare issues. And I currently have a part-time small business in my backyard. So that's my background, and I have a very strong desire to work with the other appointed members of the committee that I'm very impressed with to do all that we can to strengthen appropriate business activities in the village and help lower or offset some of the property tax burden that a lot of fixed income folks are experiencing. And, but in addition to that, look for opportunities, again, with appropriate businesses that would enhance Reed Field as a village and as a community for all citizens. So I'd be glad to take questions.
Thanks. Any questions for David? Or observations or anything?
Just one. Does this fill the committee, Eric?
This does, and so we could quite quickly have a meeting and get things started.
We will be meeting shortly.
I'm ready.
Okay.
And this really is built around the enterprise fund, but obviously, we are hoping that it takes a little bit wider role, so this will be good and the committee can start with perhaps developing some directional mission and so forth. It's really delightful that it's fully staffed. Any other questions for David?
Certainly want to thank you for volunteering.
Yes, thank you.
And anxious to see the work of the committee when you guys get going.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to nominate, I move to appoint David Tronell to the Economic Development Committee for a term that is blank.
I'm assuming it's a three-year term. Is that correct?
Yes.
Like all committees?
So, for a period of three years ending in 2021.
I'll second that. 6:30, 21.
6:30, 21.
For clarification.
You got it.
Yep.
Okay, that's acceptable? David?
Yes.
You know you were going to be on the hook for three years, did you?
I'm pleased.
That's great. Okay, so we've been moved. Did we get a second?
Second.
The second was John. Thank you, all in favor of the motion. We're all set. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with the nomination of Donna McGibney to the Age Friendly Committee. Donna, you're here. Hi, how are you?
Yeah, all right.
And also, I've seen Donna at a number of meetings already, so she is already engaging fully in the process.
There we go. Donna, your opportunity to say anything, and then if any members have a question.
Just quickly, my background is, I was in education from pre-K to college for about 40 years, and in 2010 retired to become the full-time caregiver of my mom, who is now 93. And I'm part of the Age Friendly Committee because I am aging, and so is my mom rapidly, and am fascinated with that. I'm also involved with AARP. I teach their Safe Driver course. I'll be offering that in September at the Adult Ed. And we'll be also involved in training on the We Need to Talk program that AARP has concerning elderly people who drive and the concerns families have. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, I live on Lovejoy Pond, and that's about it.
Questions, please.
Just thank you. I think this is a pretty, I think Reed Field does a very good job of addressing these sorts of things, and it's good to have folks like yourself a part of this.
Thank you.
I don't have a favorite committee, but I do have committees that I think I may have needs for someday, so delighted to support your application for appointment. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Donna McGibney to the Age Friendly until 6:30, 21.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Really, I appreciate it. We'll move on to Lindsay Morin, who is here applying for a position, well, not applying, but agreeing to serve, if you will, on the Recreation Committee. Hi, how are you?
Hi there.
You beat me up there before I even called you. So yes, you have a chance to introduce yourself.
Well, hello. My name is Lindsay Morin. I live on Sturdivant Hill with my husband Eric and my daughter Gwen, who's entering the first grade. We've lived in Reed Field for two years now, really only been part of the community, I'd say, for a year since she started school. Began volunteering coaching T-ball, and I worked for the Coney, at Coney Augusta School Department for entering my 14th year. I just have a desire to get to know my community, get involved, and present opportunities for my daughter and her friends to have fun and grow up in a community that knows each other and wants to do stuff together, so.
Absolutely great. And it's Gwen, is it?
Yes.
Hi, Gwen. Are there any questions for Gwen's mom?
Just thank you.
You've been working with the Rec Committee for a while, right? Because the meeting I was at, you were sort of like a shadow member.
Yes, I've gone to two meetings before this.
Yeah, well, congratulations. Thank you for doing this as well.
And we really like people entering the community who want to get involved right from the get-go, so welcome so much. Could I take a motion, please?
I move to nominate, or to appoint Lindsay Morin to the Recreation Committee for a period ending 6:30, 21.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to Brian Tarbuck. And Mr. Tarbuck, are you here? Is Brian Tarbuck here?
This is a reappointment.
Oh, this is a reappointment.
This is a reappointment.
Okay, and this is the one, just a re, we're missing the second page, too?
Yes, I have that here for you.
Since we're at that point in the agenda, we will simply just go ahead with that. And it's, okay, so that's on the original. So this is a reappointment of Brian Tarbuck. We're glad to have him continue, I believe. So I will make the motion that Brian Tarbuck be appointed to the Rec Committee for a three-year term that will end in 6:30, 2021.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, pass.
Just a note, Chris, I'm just passing on a copy of that second page for the board. If there was any information in there you need to look at.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to our.
We're going to do the resignation.
My very able vice chair here notes that under that same appointments and reappointments, we have one resignation, and it is Mr. Jeremy Greenman, and he is resigning from the Recreation Committee. Could I have a motion in regards to that?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Greenman from the Recreation Department, or Committee.
Okay, great. And.
Second?
Second. And this is always with regret, because obviously, we don't like to lose volunteers as well. But in any case, is, we have the motion and we have the second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say thank you to Jeremy for taking a big part in building that shed at the ball field. He was a leading role in volunteering a lot of his time to make that happen, so contributions certainly recognized and appreciated.
Very much, very much appreciated.
Great. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to our regular meeting.
Scheduled program.
And, excuse me?
Regularly scheduled program.
Regularly scheduled program, okay. And I, just upfront, because we have people that are here for a specific purpose, which is probably 19020, which is the possibility of a special town meeting, and that would revolve around the fact that we have a petition being brought forward, and we're going to talk about that petition tonight. This is not the discussion table for the merits of the project. It is really for us to verify the petition. Doesn't mean there can't be some questions about that, but this is not the venue where we're going to make a decision, if you will, in regards to the project. There's a process that would move forward on that, and I will describe that. And so if you just want to make a brief comment on that during public communications and leave, you can, or you can wait until we get to 19020. I would ask that you not speak twice on the same subject, on the same particulars, I guess I would say, for that matter. Doesn't mean that somebody can't speak twice. So in regards to that, we'll move to the minutes of the Select Board meeting of July 9th, 2018. They're in your packet. Could I have a motion in regards to the minutes?
Will we accept the minutes of the July 9th meeting?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meetings for July 9th, 2018. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. There are a number of pro forma things that are the business of the town, and so that's why I move along with those probably at a clip rate. I don't mean to be unfriendly. Okay, so we'll move on to warrants 54. Who did warrant 54, 3 through 9? How did that?
Well, Catherine did.
Catherine did some of these, and she's excused tonight.
So I think if you, if you take each warrant, and she did it, you can bring it towards us. You can read it, because it's all.
So I do want to add.
Do you want me to, do you want me to go through these? Because I was kind of the last person, too.
If you, if you would go through the warrants and maybe do any recap.
Absolutely. So if I'm not mistaken, Eric, if I follow the things directly, 54 is tidying up the business from last fiscal year.
That's correct.
Okay, and it looks like there were some fees in the amount. Okay, so it looks like it's 14, 7, 9, 3, 72. Is that correct?
Yes.
14, 7, 9, 3, 72. No, in terms of the discussion here on page, the warrant 54 sort of breakdown, looks like, Taylor, that was for the cemetery tree work that we approved?
Yes, that's been completed, and we're very happy with it.
Good. The Marana Hook Dam took a chunk there. That was for some prelim.
Engineering, engineering work, yep.
Yep. And then just some EcoMaine and some DR designs, but it looks like it's all from the Rec Board. So 14, 7, 93, 72. Any questions?
Yeah, are you going to move, why don't you move these warrants as we move through them?
Okay.
And then we'll take a second, and you'll, you've already probably gotten your questions and answers, but I'll ask for discussion if there's any.
Okay. So do you want to move this one down? You want to approve this?
Yeah, go ahead. Let's take them individually.
Excellent. Then I would move to accept, or to approve the warrant number 54 in the sum of $14,793.72.
Second.
But it's a race for seconds.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so it's been moved and seconded to approve warrant.
54.
54, which is a fiscal year 2018 warrant, in the amount of 14, 7, 93, 72. Is there any discussion on that or questions? All in favor? Okay, so now we get to a larger warrant.
Can we move through four and three, or three and four? Do you want to do that?
Yeah, three and four together.
Excellent. So through, let's do, well, God, that's going to drive me crazy. Four, if you could see the explanation. The warrant here in this particular one is just for various vendors, but it's a big one, and to me, it seems like, in addition to payroll, the big chunk is debt service, a 13 road bond, it seems. Was that it, or are we still paying on that?
That one, I believe we have one more payment, but I can't remember if that's the last one or we have one more, but we're very near the end of that.
That's what I thought.
I have been reviewing it with our bond bank application coming up, so we're very near the end on that one.
I knew we were getting close. Okay, so thank you. I wondered about that. You can see some other things. Nothing, I don't think, that's too much out of the ordinary. Any questions about warrant four? All right. Looks like warrant three was just a tax payable to the Treasury of State of Maine. You can see it there later in your packet. It's $2,607.75. And looks like it, is this warrant four A?
Is the 3, 3, 8, 5?
That's another state tax.
Yeah, we do, every month, we collect, I should say.
Gotcha.
We collect all of our fees for the week, and then those are.
But it doesn't matter. It's just warrants four and three.
It's cutting to the chase that we used to do this every two weeks and then forward a check, and it would be in our regular warrant, but now the State of Maine wants to get paid weekly.
Go figure. So, I would move to approve.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Please do.
We should add the payroll to that, because we have a.
A warrant seven?
Wait, no, it's warrant, warrant three.
Warrant three is the payroll.
We have four A and B and three, and it's a total of that 163, 567.
Right. So then let's do this. I move to approve warrant four, four A, four B, and three, in the amount of $163,567.19.
17 cents. 17 cents, right?
Says 19 on that.
Okay, well, we'll go with that number.
163, 567, 19.
Okay, is there a second?
Chris.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We all understand what we're, what this warrant is for, and 102,000 of it is for the 2013 road bond, and everything else is regular expenses. So with that being the case, is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
All right. And shall we do seven now as well?
Seven is the one we want to do.
Oh, okay. Seven is fairly straightforward. You can see seven is the RSU and Cushing Construction, in the amount of $309,516.37.
Okay, are you moving it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yes, I just did.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrant seven, in the amount of $309,516.37. Of that, RSU 38 is $295,000. Is there any discussion?
Just a note.
Please.
This was a supplemental to the other warrant, because we had received those invoices after the original deadline, but we thought it important to pay them promptly. So this is just a supplemental.
Right. And some of this is due to the fact that during the summer, we're meeting monthly.
Yes.
So we deal with a number of warrants that way. So all in favor? Okay, warrant seven is approved.
All right.
So, warrant five.
I know, it was just, it's just.
Five and six.
Checking them off.
Seven is a supplemental to five, is this correct?
To five or six. I think five might be the payroll and six might be the actual, but yes.
Right. But the amounts are separated.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you can see warrants five, five A, five B, six, also here in the explanation. The other part, the highlight of warrant five, which I also, I was excited, I hope this is the last one, but Anders Skoggen Bank has the debt service for an '08 road bond.
That one, we've still got some time on.
Roger that, okay. So that was the big chunk there, and if you notice, Hammond Tractor, can you just tell us what that was, Eric?
Yeah, that was for the purchase of the sickle, or not the sickle mower, the disc mower that we use for the roadside brush cutting this, this spring.
Which has already happened.
Which has already happened. It was, it was later in the spring that we wanted it, because we had to get that new piece of equipment, so it didn't happen until July. But we are prepared now to move ahead and this fall, do a second cutting to make sure that we have all the grass and brush out of the way, out of the immediate roadway, so that we can have room for the snow and no obstructions. And next spring, we'll have less to deal with when we do cut it. So now we're in a good position to cut this twice a year, and I just took a little bit off my town manager's report, so that's great.
Oh, okay, super. Sorry, thank you.
No, that's what's why we asked the question.
Excellent. Are there any questions about the warrant five, five A, five B, and six?
Please proceed with the motion.
All righty. I move that we approve warrants five, five A, five B, and six, for a total amount of
Second.
Great, it's been moved and seconded, and the amount that's printed is $220,270.59. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, the bills are paid.
All right.
We'll move on to Select Board communications, and I will just start myself with just a very brief note that the, the summer residents meeting that we had was the absolute best summer residents meeting we've had since I've been on the board and/or attending board meetings for some years. It was really great. There were a lot of volunteers here to update our guests, summer guests, and there were quite a number of summer guests as well. Robin Lind did a lot of the wheelhouse work on that and groundwork on it, and so she deserves some special thanks and praise for doing that, and I just can't say how successful that was, so I really appreciate that. Do other members of the board have anything they would like to communicate?
I do.
Thank you.
I want to thank Merrill Investigations and Mia Linas for, and Micah's, Summer Camp and After School Programs for supporting our 2018 Reed Field Festival. I want to thank all of the people who got wet.
And I know they're not thanking me.
And I want to thank all of the committees and different organizations in Reed Field who planned an event for that day and it made it a success. And I know Dennis has a lot more to say, so I'll give it to him.
Doesn't he always? Yes, it was a tremendous, I just want to say thanks to everyone who came out to support the Reed Field Festival. I want to say a special thanks to everyone. We had seven kickball teams participate in our tournament, and if you think each team had at least 10 people, and they brought some friends with them, so we were looking, somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 people were all at the Fairgrounds Ball Field for the, for the inaugural kickball tournament. We gave away the first place prize to Still Kicking, a group, a team that is based at Winthrop Elementary School. The second place team was the Rec Crew, the Wreckers of the Rec Group, and the best uniforms went to the team kicking at Old School. They dressed up like 80's rock stars. It was incredible. So we really appreciate that. We're hoping to continue and do it again sometime, and I concur, working with the individual groups, the conservation, the trails, the rec, the different folks at the fire department and having the supper, and just making sure that Reed Field has something to be real proud of. I know the folks at the Union Meeting House were great. What a beautiful space that is up there, and they had great quilts laying everywhere. We had music out there. So just a great day to celebrate Reed Field, a beautiful space up there to share with folks, and just shows that appreciation for, you know, just the performance and arts and things like that is alive up there. Something else that I'll add is, we want to do this again. We're looking forward to helping and being a part of upcoming Heritage Days, and I think that's something that we can continue to build off of. So huge thanks to everyone, and thanks.
Sean, do you have anything to add?
I'd just like to, I miss the award dunking this year.
Dunk, yeah.
It's extra cold.
I really, I really wish I could have made it, but I couldn't. But thank you to Dennis and Chris for spearheading this thing, and it, from what I could see, going through town, it was, it was a big success. Thank you very much for, for doing that.
Thank you, John. We'll move on to Town Staff Reports, Eric.
All right, thank you. I'll pass around my, some of the town manager reports.
Okay, thank you.
Start with my town manager report, with the maintenance and infrastructure component. Roadside mowing is complete, as Dennis and I were talking about, and that will likely happen again this fall. The following bid award this evening, we'll be moving on with our road maintenance to tackle the two components of striping and crack sealing. Crack sealing is very much a pavement management longevity effort, and the striping is really safety. And we, about two years ago, did nearly every road in town. We will be touching nearly every road in town again, ensuring that we have fog lines that are visible and where appropriate, double yellows in the middle to help guide our drivers. So those will be happening once we get through tonight's meeting. Gravel road work is underway. Gay Road has been started but is not complete. We will be switching to a different material type. We tried the Type A DOT spec 2-inch minus, and it's just not the right mix, the right gravel for that type of use, residential and the traffic, particularly what we'll be seeing on loose road with a lot of that through traffic. So we'll be looking at a different material type to finish off those projects with. The transfer station road has been started, primarily the ditching, and we will be adding about at least six inches of material, if not more, in some areas, in order to prepare that for paving this fall. So that piece of the infrastructure is moving along quickly and well. The Marana Hook Lake Dam, I'm not sure if we've announced this previously, but we did at the summer residents meeting, but I'm not sure in a broader audience, we've selected H.E. Callahan to perform that work for the town, and we have had our preliminary pre-construction meeting with them to talk about getting started with that and moving on with the project. The financing of that, we have the application into the Maine Bond Bank for $160,000, which is less than we had originally proposed at town meeting, and I want to thank the board for your guidance on that and looking to be conservative and responsible in how we approach that. What we have now is a 20, $30,000 less than what had been originally proposed, and it represents our existing contribution plus 10% contingency and the borrowing amount being the remainder, so, of the project cost as it's projected. So that is underway, and we have the financing in hand, or in process to make that happen. Let's see, revised, revised application to consider a sidewalk on Church Road will also be submitted this week, and that's for that same project that we had, the voters had approved, I think, two years ago now, and we did not get funding for the first phase, and so we're applying again to see if that's some. phase. And so we're applying again to see if that's something that DOT, with the pass through of federal dollars, can help us with. Again, this is not a guarantee that that project will happen. This is just to get the process going and get the public outreach and engagement happening and do some of that planning work for that prospective project. Moving on to administration and personnel, we are in the process of hiring for a maintenance slash general services position. Currently, that is being offered internally to our union employees. However, I expect that we will be having that open up to the general public shortly, within a few weeks. And so if anybody has an interest or knows anybody who will be interested or qualified to do general maintenance for the town of Reedfield, we're looking for someone in that position. Let's see, moving on to transfer station, we're completing the final legal review for our paint care program. The board had approved that a couple weeks ago, or maybe a month now. It's been to our council, back to the paint care program, and we're having one more round of reviews and revisions. And we should be prepared to execute that and move ahead this month.
And Eric, just so people know, that means that we can return unused paint to the transfer station through the paint care system?
Absolutely. And it's recycled from there, or if it's oil-based, it may be used to make, make, you know, for a waste energy type solution. But most of it, a large majority of it will be recycled. They'll pull the pigments out, and it's a pretty fascinating program. And that should save some folks some money and also save us some money because we won't have paint buckets filled full of cat litter in the, in the solid waste stream. So. Very excited about that program. So the, the next item is our recycling. And we've had tremendous response from the public. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved with helping us reduce contamination in our recycling stream. Since we took this project on and have been working to reduce contamination, we have only had one contaminated load, and it wasn't a result of, of any, you know, small amount of contamination. It was a very large amount of contamination. We had somebody dump in half dozen or more bottles of what looked like just empty oil containers, but they had oil and gas and other petroleum products in them. When they were compacted, they contaminated the entire load and it had to go to the landfill. So that was very, very hard for me personally to see a load of recyclables go because someone was very either, they either weren't paying attention or didn't bother to. But recyclables, we, we do take waste oil at the transfer stations. No need to hide it in an oil bottle to get rid of it. So please be.
Where do you take that at the transfer station?
Right, right beside the E-Waste, right beside the shed there. We have a 50-gallon drum, a couple of them that we, that we use. So please, if you have that stuff, we have ways to take care of it. Old gas does have a cost, but we can arrange to have that taken care of. If, if you have a trouble paying for it, we can probably work something out on that, too. But really, we just want to maintain that integrity of those recyclables. And we've had great success outside of that one incident. So that's about it for the transfer station. I also want to, yeah, one more thing. I want to thank the staff, both our seasonal staff, our recycling educator that came in this summer, and our year-round staff for helping to keep, you know, contamination out of that recycling stream.
We've been putting stuff on the Facebook page, too. So I put a nice, comprehensive, you know, what the lanes mean and things like that. And that got some good response.
That absolutely did. So thank you, Dennis, for that. Yeah, the education isn't over. We will be having an insert in our tax bills on recycling. So that's, that's coming up. Also, one announcement, I have two actually, but just one on the paper here, is Labor Day is September 3rd. The town office and library will be closed on that Monday. The other announcement is that we are preparing to commit taxes. So if everything goes as planned, this Thursday, we will be doing the commitment, and tax bills would be going out shortly after that. So people could expect to see their bills in, in the mail in mid-September. So that's the expectation right now. And good news is that the mail rate is looking to be just a little bit less than what we budgeted for, thanks to everybody contributing and building new houses and putting in new kitchens and things like that. So things are good. And that'll be my town manager's report. Any questions on any of this or any other activity in town?
No, go ahead with the treasurer's report.
All right, thank you. So this report is for the month of July, the first month of the fiscal year 2019. Check reconciliation was completed through July 31st, 2018. And I didn't observe any unusual activity. We didn't have any return checks. So things were looking good there. With respect to our audit, we have done our pre-audit meetings with Barry Talbot Royer. That's myself, Teresa, and a few of the other key staff. And we'll be moving forward with field visits in, in later this month and into September. So that's moving forward. General comments are that we have some, some strange numbers here with respect to revenues. They appear to be down relative to last fiscal year. However, we did have an over $60,000 revenue item, miscellaneous revenue last year that threw a lot of this stuff off for the sale of that house that was then used to fund our tax assistance program, local tax assistance program. So small numbers can be thrown off sometimes. You see the exact same thing happening with our roads and drainage numbers. It looks like we had a 4,000% increase in, in our expenditure. And that's just not the case. We just had a, last year, we only had spent $15, and this year, we're up to 687. So it's just a small number issue.
It's that hole at the bottom of Sturven.
Well, yeah, that's.
You're right.
We do have cold, cold patch available to get that one taken care of. But so some of the numbers look a little bit odd, but overall, for, for a one-month analysis, everything is, is close to where it should be. And if it's not, it's explainable. So if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. But otherwise, things are, things are looking good. And I did catch one journal adjustment that has to be made where we were putting money or putting expenses in a department that was not funded this year when it should have been to an account that was. So we do catch those things periodically, and we had one, and that was noted and will be corrected.
Is that a result, Eric, of the budget committee reorganizing some of those areas?
Yeah, yeah. We had had a building department, and that was folded into the maintenance department with, with building being one of those areas, grounds maintenance, building maintenance, and, and so on. So that is my summary. Do you have any questions on this?
There are any questions for Eric? Thank you, Eric, for your reports, very thorough reports.
Thank you very much.
And the treasurer's report as well. On, in regards to boards, committees, commissions, and departments, I want to thank the Trails Committee for, this is not a set of minutes, but it's an overview of their accomplishments from July of 2017 to July of 2018. I did see Greg Durgan this morning and, and just thanked him for making sure that this was submitted. We also have the library minutes, minute meetings for 6/6/18, the Conservation Commission meeting minutes for 2/13/18, 5/8/18, 1/9/18, 6/12/18, and the Trails Committee minutes for 6/26/18. These are all in your packets, and I encourage you to peruse them. I'm sure you have. And it's duly recorded that we've received these minutes. So now we come to public communication. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the select board? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on. We will move to, we've already done appointments, reappointments, and resignations. 19017 is to hear a report on the Select Board Retreat and Consider Adoption of Rules. The Select Board Retreat was on July 23rd, and in the distributed packet was the agenda, and actually the report for the previous year, which is something we reviewed at that meeting. But probably much more germane is the fact that the report that followed the Reedfield Retreat. And so that was put in your boxes as an addendum and also posted online as, as an addendum to this packet. So basically, I'll just very quickly give a summary overview. We did convene in an open workshop session here upstairs. We had some lovely food and so forth that we all shared. And we, we, we have seven goals, and I'm going to read them in summary form. And then what I would ask the Select Board to do is to go ahead and, in any discussion, make any corrections to those goals or to speak to them, and if they wish. And, and then we would go ahead and prove those as our goals moving forward for the coming year. Some of these goals are sort of ongoing because we've been trying to set multi-year goals that look forward. Some of them are goals that have been in development, and there's just a piece or a refinement that we want to make. And some of the previous goals really are processes that we see carrying on as normal course of business, so they no longer appear in goals. So there were four goals, basically, that came forward from last year that were multi-year in nature anyhow. The first one is to review revised draft governance documents as needed. And I know that's a little boring, but it's kind of an ongoing thing that the Select Board is always doing. But we're trying to do a fairly proactive look at our documents and particularly policies, if you will, and, and ordinances to go ahead and take care of those as, as needed. We want to finalize a solar energy plan for town facilities. This was an energy conservation goal last year, and so now it's refined to the solar piece. And we have a solar ad hoc committee that has been working on that. As a matter of fact, we were walking through the Pucker Brush the other night, looking at some sites and so forth. Town buildings, planning, we're going to focus a little bit more particularly on the library and fire station, just to understand their needs and how that may need to be addressed in, in the future. And that's very mu, very much a proactive, if you will, multi-year look forward to where our needs are going. And then finally, cannabis considerations. We have kind of been around the horn with this, with the state of Maine. When are you going to pass a law that we can then, you know, take care of coating for, for this, for the town of Reedfield in the sense of having an ordinance or whatever? And so that's going to move forward probably this, well, it will move forward this year. We're, as a town, we're going to try to do something in regards to making sure that whatever consideration we need to make regarding cannabis sales and so on and so forth in town are addressed. Our three new goals are to consider annualizing Heritage Days. We were very happy seeing that Heritage Day's been a success in the past. We had a festival this year that was after this goal setting, but we already kind of knew it was going to be a success. So we think an annual event gives some year-to-year structure for the town. And we believe we can do it within very reasonable budgetary limits. We want to set a direction regarding parks and recreation. We created a Parks and Rec Ad Hoc Committee that we were, we polled members about whether they would like to continue. And this was made up of a couple representatives from Trails, from, from Recreation, and one or two other areas.
Conservation.
Conservation. And so we'd like to focus that group and kind of get what is the vision for parks and recreation in the town of Reedfield. And then we want to consider a local foods slash farms ordinance. A number of communities are doing this, so, so you can purchase directly from your farmer, perhaps lightly, if you will, processed materials. So for example, if you go and purchase an ear of corn, that's fine. But purchasing a roasted ear of corn with a hot pepper or whatever that's pickled in a jar or something like that is another whole step. So we want to take a look at that and learn about that. So those are our goals in summary. The board is open to commenting on these, please.
It's what we discussed?
It's what we discussed, and we spent a number of hours doing so. So I think we probably went ahead and, I just want to make sure if everybody was.
A lot of these goals are just ongoing.
Right.
They're, they're goals that we had last year, and they weren't meant to be one-year goals because there's something that we're developing as we go along. For instance, you know, the solar power that Bruce and I are looking at with the committee is not something that we're finding out that you want to just jump into and throw solar panels up willy-nilly. So, you know, these are all goals that everybody on the Select Board has had on different goals, has been working on, and will continue to work on.
And one thing I will also say is, is I just want to shout out, not to give you a complex, Bruce, but having Bruce be the chair of this board is also, has been helpful in terms of, for my sake here, because as we revise and review the governance ordinances and documents and policies, I think it's always done with an eye toward the future of this board, not necessarily the individuals on the board, but the future of, of the Select Board and its place in the town. So revising and always trying to update and streamline procedures and policies is always something that I enjoy. And I would just like to say a shout out to Bruce, who led that retreat and who also helped us sort of focus some of that energy. So, thank you, Bruce.
And there's something to be said for the continuity of having one person handling that.
I appreciate that. And basically, the, the board goals were built by consensus. So everybody really played a really important role in building those consensus. So I would entertain a motion to accept the report and to further state that those seven goals are our goals for 2018 and 19.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept this report and to adopt these seven goals as our sort of guiding goals for the 2018, 2019 year.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded as spoken. And any discussion? All in favor? So again, if you want to read which, the report, which is a little bit fuller in terms of what happened and what the particular goals are, I mean, there's a couple sentences on each one. That was the addendum to this board meeting, and that appears in your packet. I mean, that appears online in, in your packet if you're here. So now we're going to move on to considering the possibility of a special town meeting in November. And let me see, for some reason, I'm out of order.
Did I skip the?
Striping and.
Yeah, the contract.
Crack sealing.
Oh, okay. That was my note to myself, actually, because they are reversed, if you will note in your packet. So 19019 is actually the road striping, and the crack sealing, at least in my packet, is 19018. So.
Okay.
Let's start, Eric, with the crack sealing, please.
Sure. This is a project we have put out to bid. And we did this about two years ago, and we're, we're at it again. We are looking at doing work on a number of roads in town, really on an as-needed basis. There are some that need it more than others, but by staying on top of this, we can ensure longevity in our pavement. We had three bids. We had BPS Group, we had Seal Coating Incorporated, and we had ProSeal. Last year, or last time we had put this out to bid, ProSeal was the low bid, with Seal Coating Inc. being the runner-up. This year, that's reversed. Both of these companies are well-known and well-respected. And so the apparent low bid would be Seal Coating Inc. at 1373 per gallon applied. So that would be my recommendation to move forward with that company to perform that work for us this year.
Are there any questions of Eric? And I do have one.
I have one.
Sure.
How could there be such a gross discrepancy in the two? Is that just, is that beyond us? I mean, the, the three bids, there's one clearly.
Yeah, I would say that the BPS Group is a bit smaller. I wouldn't say a bit, drastically smaller than these others. Seal Coating, for example, does work for the, the state of Maine DOT. ProSeal is a very large company that does a lot of this work. So I'd say it's probably primarily economies of scale.
Gotcha. Okay. Just, just in terms of the bid process.
Yeah. I mean, it's always comfortable to have two that are close, which we do.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So this bid, so my question, Eric, is this bid really is designed to do this per gallon applied. But we, do we have a do-not-exceed level? I do know, I do note that we mentioned that it's within the means of the town's budget.
Yes. So. Yes, so...
But can you at least tell us what that amount is?
Sure, yeah, well, so I would say there's a do-not-exceed amount. The amount of cracks that we have would not come close to dipping into the, or pulling too much out of the road reserve that we have, summer roads reserve. We do budget, I think we had around $10,000 or $15,000 budgeted for this in our budget line. That being said, if we need to do more, I would very much, and have no qualms exceeding that amount using those funds from the summer roads, because this is preventative maintenance. This is the type of activity that putting down a crack seal on a portion of Church Road wouldn't be an issue for us financially and would have some pretty significant benefits long-term. So I guess I don't have the numbers in front of me, I can get them for you, but our budget was, I think, around $10,000 or $15,000. And last year, we came in, or two years ago when we did this, we came in under our budgeted amount, so I don't see why we wouldn't this year. But again, I'm looking at this and saying it's a needs-based project, and I really don't know exactly how many gallons, because the crack, it's very hard to judge exactly. But I'd say it's necessary, and if the board would like to set a value, I'd be comfortable with that, but I don't believe it's necessary.
No, I don't think it's necessary either. I would think it's necessary that you tell the board if we look like we have an extreme amount of more work than we anticipate, that would be the reasonable handling capacity, and maybe communicate through me or to the board directly.
Yeah, if anything looks...
Okay, so you're recommending Seal Coating Inc.?
Yes, at the price of 1373 per gallon.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the bid of ProSeal Coating for 1373 per gallon applied as listed.
Not ProSeal.
Oh, sorry, Seal Coating.
Seal Coating.
Seal Coating, I looked at the wrong thing. Seal Coating Incorporated, 1373 applied.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to award the contract to Seal Coating Inc. at 1373 per gallon applied. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to...
The striping.
The striping, which is 019.
Similar situation, two years, two-year cycle on this, and I think that it's definitely time to do this again. This is a fairly expensive proposition for us. I expect it will be in the $23,000 to $25,000 range when it all is said and done. Looking at that over a biannual basis, it's not so bad, and I always pitch this as cheap insurance when weather's bad, conditions are bad, it helps keep people safe. So we had three bids come in, we had Fine Line, Lucas Striping, and LND Safety. Lucas is the apparent low bidder and also a resident taxpayer in the town of Reedfield. Lucas has been doing this work for us for quite some time, as long as I've been here, and their prices are very competitive, and the work is of high quality. I didn't note in my report, but I did write it down, that the crosswalks have already been done because of safety concerns, and I did work with Lucas on that piece. So my recommendation is that we move ahead with Lucas Striping for the prices listed, four cents per foot for white, four cents per foot for yellow, 75 cents square foot for crosswalks, and other marking that is done by the square foot.
Okay, it's clear to me, and it's on the same basis in terms of oversight on expenditure. So could I have a motion in regards to this?
I move we accept rogue striping services from Lucas Striping as quoted.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Now we get to consider the possibility of a special town meeting in November. We have a petition that Mr. Vitar has brought forward, and we will take a look at the petition tonight to validate, if you will, the petition in terms of whether the petition is, whether the petition is presented properly. Then there would be additional process on that petition, okay? If we accept that petition, then we would refer this to the process that is already in place, which is the Planning Board, to give us an advisory note back on this. We would also subject the petition itself, its wording and so forth, to legal review. And my purpose tonight is really to simply not debate the yays and nays regarding the property, but really to ensure that we have the space that this petition is treated validly in terms of having the ability to be put on the ballot as a petition, if it so moves forward in that direction. That sounds like pretty convoluted perhaps, but it's pretty straightforward in my mind. The petition itself, I've reviewed it at this point. It is valid in terms of the number of signatures that were given to the town clerk, it's invalid. I mean, it's valid, I didn't mean to say invalid, I meant to say it's valid. And in respects to who circulated the petition, so I would move that we note the petition as being valid, and then subject it to appropriate process with the Planning Board and legal review. And then obviously, if it does go to town meeting vote, there would be, I can't say there would be a hearing, because I'm not sure if that hearing would be taking place with the Planning Board and its process, but there's a, there's a larger, there's a larger discussion that will happen in regards to the merits of the case, okay? So there are two actions that I would be looking forward, to accept this as a valid petition to deal with going forward, and then secondly, to go ahead and say that there will be a town meeting to handle any valid petition or ordinance, because we may put forward an ordinance that the Select Board is reviewing at that time, if it's ready at that time. I would further state that we, in order to allow the maximum amount of time for process and looking at anything that will be on the ballot in November of 2018, because that's coming up faster than we think, that we would do this by hand ballot. If we had one or two ordinances, for example, in this petition, we would have a yes/no ballot, which we would physically count. And what that does is it, it takes care of not having to deal with the software end of it, and actually, we have to submit some materials and so on and so forth, so that that question goes on that ballot, where we elect, well, the governor and many other offices. So I'm open to questions from the public and questions from the board. I'll start with the board. Please do. Please go to the mic and, if you would. We do that because the microphone is, that helps us all.
Okay, so if I understand what you've said... The ballot for this particular issue does not, will not be a secret ballot?
Oh, no, it would be a secret ballot. You mean, yeah, it would be, you would come here and you would vote on this petition if it's valid through legal review and so forth?
Yes, but the public will vote in a secret, in a ballot that is not publicly, you're not going to raise your hand.
No, 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 no. You vote, no, that's not actually how we do it.
I misunderstood, yes, I misunderstood.
Yep. And actually, the board does have the right to have a special town meeting where we would do that, but I'm not recommending that as the process.
I just want to say that the comparable would be the school referendum vote, yes/no.
Exactly.
You fill in the bubble, you fold it in half, you stick it in the box, and that's how it would proceed.
Yes. Other people who would like to speak?
Matty Dark, resident up on Reedfield on Kent Hill Road. First, I want to thank you all for sitting on the, on the Select Board. Having sat in your seat in the past, it's not an easy thing, so thank you very much for taking the time to do that. The question, I have two questions, I think. One, I want to make sure I understand what tonight's vote does with regard to indicating that the petition is valid. If I understand that correctly, that is simply a vote that says you've received the proper amount of signatures and, and that the individuals that circulated the petition were valid circulators.
That's correct. This is not a merit vote on the language, if you will. I mean, for example, if we were to move forward, there could be some refinement to language. If we weren't to move forward, then obviously, there would be no language. This is the, this is, the petition being presented in the appropriate form to the Select Board, so then we can deal with it.
Great. And I guess the second question I have is, I have a copy of the petition that was presented in your, in your Select Board packet this evening. It doesn't include a map. It simply indicates a number of parcels, that those parcels are currently zoned in some fashion, and that they are going to be changed to some other fashion. It doesn't specify, it doesn't provide any real detail as to exactly what's changing with respect to the zoning, and I'm just curious if there's a map that is part of this petition that was circulated and part of your packets that I don't have, or not?
No, we don't have a map. Obviously, we would have a map as we move forward in the process. I'm quite certain that the Planning Board has been working with maps.
Yes, they have.
Okay, so the Planning Board has a map that is part of this document?
Yeah, this process is, this petition process, I will say, is, for lack of a better term, being paralleled in presentation, if you will, to the Planning Board for their consideration. I know they've gotten to a certain working point, I'm not exactly sure what that is, I haven't talked with the Chair of the Planning Board.
Great, great. That's interesting, having, like I say, having sat on the Select Board in the past and never having had a petition presented to us, this is, this is actually interestingly new to me.
Right, yes, that's right, yeah. Well, Chris and I have actually been there before with a petition, and it was one that we were on the end of wanting to move forward with that was denied, so we have some experience with that.
Okay, I will, I will take a look and see what the Planning Board has then. Thank you.
Please, and obviously, if this moves forward more into the public discussion and so forth, then maps will have to be provided. People will need to see the visuals, so I am glad I welcomed that question.
Yeah, that will certainly be part of, part of my, my question is, is how a petitioner could potentially sign a petition and not know exactly what they're signing, but we'll see how that moves forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that probably the vast majority of the people in town do not know where map 120 lot 11 is, unless they are familiar with the project.
Yep.
So that, I would, I would certainly hope that there would be maps and some type of hearing to give folks an opportunity for and against to have a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, the process, the process, and I can't necessarily speak to exactly what the process will be, because I need to get, or we need to get legal advice and MMA guidance on it, and so forth.
And we'll make that available to the public when we get...
That's correct.
Yep.
I will not, you know, question the intent of signers of the petition, whether they know or not, because the information's available online, or it may have been with some of the circulators, I don't know, so I'm sure they signed in good intention.
No, tonight, we're basically accepting the petition...
We're accepting the petition.
That's been verified by...
By the town clerk. So the town clerk said there were 28 pages of signatures that came from these persons who circulated it. Her job is to go through, make sure there's no dupes and people who are not able to vote in Reedfield.
If I can just let you know, if you are curious, you have this document with you that has the lot numbers and things, you can find the aerial pictures.
I already have.
Good.
Okay.
I was just going to, in case...
It's my day, it's my day job.
Oh, I got you.
For the last 28 years, it's my day job.
Then you know what you're doing. For those at home who are watching, you can access the maps in case you're curious about what it is, and it's under assessing, and it's just the tax maps from 2016, just to give you an idea in case you're following.
Excellent. Okay, I look forward to hearing from, from, hearing what your legal counsel has to say, which I know to be excellent. It's the same legal counsel we use in the city I work in.
Thank you. Please do. Yep. Please keep it very brief and concise.
Of course.
Thank you.
On that, yeah, the people who circulated, I was watching as they did this, there were maps available, if anyone were to ask, they had one that they could show them. They described the area in detail, and that was part of the process. So there were maps available for them to take or to see, and, and, and one more thing, in review of the actual application, the petition itself passed through Robin and Eric's office, and this is what they said was required. If they had said a map was had, should be attached, it would have been. It wasn't requesting.
No, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Good evening, hi, I'm Will Harris.
Hey, Will. You've sat up here, too.
Hmm?
You've sat up here, too.
I have sat up there, too, which, which is really why I'm up here.
Thank you.
Because my questions go to process.
Yes.
So first off, when I sat up there, which was admittedly a while back, a special town meeting was a big deal, usually brought on by like a budget crisis, something big happened and it was going to blow a hole in your budget. So I guess, and I knew that in the normal course of business, the town accepts petitions to go at the town meeting to be put under warrant. My question, first question is, what's the criteria for having a special town meeting?
The criteria for the special town meeting would be for the board to simply evaluate whether or not we should move forward on any questions or the ordinance itself. So that is solely within our authority to do that. The reason I would be open to putting anything on the November ballot, and I would not want to do this in November of 2019, because it would be a very low turnout, is simply in a gubernatorial election, there's an adequate or good turnout of voters. So I'm reluctant to put ordinances and guidance to my Select Board when we've talked about ordinances is, you know, if we have one that's timely and reasonable, we might put it on, on the ballot. And so if this process is moving towards where we can ask the question on the November ballot, I want to create the space so there is a November ballot if need be. I can't say that the process will be completed in time, and I don't believe this board or the Planning Board would do anything to rush the process beyond reasonability simply to move it to ballot. I don't think that's what, what we're about. We're about looking at this properly. I don't know if that's a full answer, but that's kind of...
Thank you.
Where I come from, I guess. Please, John, if you want to answer the question to some degree.
Sorry, Bill. I just wanted to say, Will, that I, for one, am not in favor of special town meetings if it can't be done on a regular vote, either the November vote, because as you know, special town meetings, you incur a cost.
That was going to be my next question.
Exactly.
What's the cost, and is there a budget for it?
Right, well...
We'll be voting that day for a governor and some federal offices...
Right.
And for the legislature, so we'll be here anyhow...
Yeah.
To hand count the number of ballots, uh, that may be for an ordinance, uh, for example, uh, that's a yes or no or a petition, if, if that's, happens to be their, uh, question. We'll probably entail with the clerical people, from what I've seen, they process that rather rapidly.
So, we...
I, I, I see the cost is not a factor. If I thought this was gonna, again, why I wouldn't want to do this in 2019 would be, it's an off-year, there's no other offices opening and so on and so forth, then we would have to basically authorize a full, we could, a full, uh, election process.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't be in favor of having a special town meeting for this article.
That was gonna be my, it, it, it sounds like then the November ballot is the go-no-go kind of thing. If it's not, then they get, i- if all, if all your information isn't available, then does it move to the regular town meeting?
It could, if, if for some reason, um, well, I'm gonna use the example of an ordinance, okay? Because that's something that the Select Board itself has more control for putting on the ballot. So, when we have an ordinance, uh, we get public, we get public input and so forth into that ordinance. We hold a public hearing as a Select Board, okay? Some of this work here lies with the Planning Board. So, I'm giving you the example that I know how to deal with. Um, if we have an ordinance we think is, um, reasonable to put before the public at a special town meeting in November of an election that is not gonna be a costly election, fine. If we haven't got our ducks in a row, or we get feedback from the public that we need to spend some more time or, or rewrite parts of that ordinance, then we're gonna kick it to, to June. So, that's what we would do with our questions, uh, for ordinances, and I don't see this as different.
Right.
So, so my last question is, and maybe you can or can't answer it, but what would be on the ballot? What would be the ballot question then?
This is the question that is, um, is being submitted, okay? Now, um, just like with the state of Maine, when you go to the Secretary of State's office, a petition is given to the Secretary of State, which thousands of people sign, and he determines, uh, the wording of it. My understanding is that Mr. Dunlap does that in consultation with, um, some of the for and against parties. Uh, so, but the biggest piece of that is that it's, because it's not always, that there's clarity, if you will, in terms of the question. What was the one we voted on, um, very recently?
For the ordinance?
No, 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 no. There was a state question just recently that was so convoluted.
It was, it was ranked choice voting?
Ranked choice voting. So, it was bizarre, the way they answered that. So, yes, there would be a clear question, okay? That would satisfy the petitioners, it would satisfy the boards involved in terms of, uh, that the wording act, accurately asks the question and makes the appropriate references.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Other members of the public, please.
Response, can I respond, please?
Sure. And again, I don't want to get into a long back and forth debate, so, um, please be brief, thank you.
There's a question here that's been brought up, and that's the rationale for this and whether it's justified and so on. And, based on several sessions in which the Planning Board has held, held, have provided decisions, those decisions spoke to legal issues, issues that said, they, in those issues, the question was, is this a club? In one of those petitions that were sent to the, to the, uh, for applications to the Planning Board, is it a club? And they determined it wasn't. A club is a legal instrument, it's a legal entity. And because of that, it has the rights of a person, just like any legal entity. It's separate from people, and the question really is, does it have a right to exist? The town of Reed Field says it did in the land use ordinance. The club has a right to exist. There is no qualification of that club, no qualification of whether it could be a club for music or a club for sewing or anything. A club can exist, no one can own a club. The next question was, who gets the money? Is it possible that the person who is originating the club will put the money in his pocket? Is it going to be a business for profit? The answer is, that is illegal for them to, for the Planning Board to have said that it isn't so.
Bob, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to stop, because what we're getting into is some of the minutia of, um, that's beyond what we're deciding tonight.
Okay.
So, in order for us to move forward, so that those, um, observations are made appropriately and legally reviewed, our process tonight is to say that yes, if we so vote.
Okay.
And, um, uh, that the petition before us has met the requirements of a petition.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, for process, okay? So, that's step number one. Then there's a lot of stuff to happen, I think, beyond that.
Okay.
Okay, and that's where you would probably address some of those concerns.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, and, and I, and I'll further state, just so people, you can sit down.
Yeah.
You don't need to respond to me on this.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll further state that, um, you know, it's our land use, um, it's our land use ordinance that, um, uh, the Planning Board is, um, utilizing to look at this, and it is our, um, and it is, and the land use ordinance has support within state law, okay, and validity. So, there, the Select Board is probably not going to get into the yes and no merits of this, of this. It's gonna go to the Planning Board with a process that's already started, and, um, and I think as a Select Board, looking at whatever ballot we put this on, if we so do, we will be asking for advisory note from them in regards to that, and that'll be part of the consideration, along with what our town attorney tells us and what MMA guidance will be on it. I will say upfront that my druthers are, when a petition comes forward to, uh, our board, I want to have citizens, um, heard, okay? So, um, but I want them heard within the right parameters of process. And so, that's what we're gonna be focused on. So, what I would like to do is take, um, a motion in regards to this, actually, I will go ahead and make the motion. And, um, the motion is that we recognize that the Select Board has been submitted a valid petition, um, of record that's duly, uh, meets, uh, the requirements sufficient, as noted by our town clerk, for, for the process consideration.
Second that one.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. You're okay with the wording? Okay, you can always look at the tape later, right? I'll entertain one question on this, yes, please.
Bonnie Harris, Old Kent Hill Road.
Hi, Bruce.
My question is just a, a process question, and that is, since Bob has said, and published, actually, at this point, that he's going to go ahead and have events at his venue, no matter what, why go through this process?
Please don't quote me, I don't think that's valid.
Okay. Let's just, um, um, we will deal with, um, we, we'll have to deal with things on a case-by-case basis. That's all I can say, Bonnie, is, at this point, what we're gonna do is, um, take a vote on whether this petition is valid. If there are, um, noise complaints from people, in the meantime, um, people have a valid, uh, the, the ability to call the county sheriff. I mean, that's, whether it's somebody who's setting firecrackers off to your house after 10 o'clock when they're not supposed to, or whatever it happens to be, um, you know, there's appropriate ways of handling that as, as well. So, I, hopefully, we won't be in those situations. So, we have a motion on the floor, uh, in front of the board. Is there further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. So, uh, the next motion I will make, uh, will be that we, um, authorize, um, uh, the town clerk and the town to, uh, be prepared in the instance of need for, uh, a special town meeting, uh, in November, which would be a secret ballot question, or questions, uh, either by ordinance or petition, uh, but that, um, we begin, um, well, we don't need to begin any preparation for it, but we just go ahead and simply authorize it if needed.
Now, when you're saying a special town meeting...
Another special town meeting.
It is a special town meeting, because the town of Reed Field meets, um, in secret ballot. We don't meet with a floor meeting. So, it will be called a special town meeting. Actually, actually, when you vote, um, by secret ballot, that is the town meeting of the town of Reed Field. Now, there's been a lot of debate over the years about what that means and so on and so forth, but the legal, um, instrument of that vote is, that is the town meeting.
But is this gonna be at our normal November town meeting?
This would be at the, well, we wouldn't have a normal November town meeting. We, we have a June, uh, normal town meeting. This November, uh, vote, if it occurs on any ordinances, and we have discussed, by the way, whether or not we would put an ordinance on the ballot. So, I mean, that's a discussion we previously had. So, I'd be creating space for that as well. So, for example, um, if we have all our ducks in a row on the cannabis question, that would probably be one we would, we would think about putting forward.
Yeah, just, just so we don't confuse people like myself.
Yes.
A special town meeting to me is, that's all we're gonna address, is what is on this petition. What you mean is that we will be voting along with the gubernatorial, the...
That's correct, that's correct. It's the same election, it's not a separate election.
It's not a, it's not a separate...
Yeah, it'll be the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, right? Is that how it goes? Second Monday, or whatever the Constitution of the United States says.
But it's gonna be called a special town meeting, 'cause it's not June.
It has to be.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right. So, if we were to put on, so, let's just say all of this was aside, and we wanted to put on the cannabis, um, question, that would be a special town meeting. I don't think it's as clear, perhaps, as I would like for the public, but that's what it is.
Yep.
Yep. Did I make that motion?
Yep.
Okay, did I receive a second on it?
Nope.
Yeah, I did.
Did you?
Oh, you did second it? Okay, um, thank you for the observation, the audience is attentive. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Yes, John, please.
No, no, I thought we were voting.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Let's vote.
All in favor? Okay, so there'll be a special town meeting if we have any ordinances or questions to address. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate you being here. Uh, we're going to complete our ballot voting, uh, for MMA elections next. I expect a mass exodus before we do that, but you're welcome to stay and, and chat with us. Thank you for being here.
And it is our intention to hear everybody in this matter, to have, uh, it's our intention to get input from everyone, both for...
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so, next in front of us is 19-021, and that is to complete, uh, voting for the MMA elections. And, uh, basically, MMA, uh, has sent us a ballot, um, with, uh, individuals proposed, uh, for, um, by the nominated committee for their vice president, which is a one-year term, and then, uh, three members of the executive, um, committee. Uh, and they have sent us abbreviated, um, biographical sketches for each of these individuals, which I have read, and I simply think they would be, um, great people to have on, um, on, on the, uh, on the Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee.
Can we, uh, can we ask Eric to sign this? Is that what it says here, signed by municipal officer, designated by majority of municipal...
Either or, either or.
I think you signed it last time for us.
Right, I believe so. However you choose to do it, it, uh, you're voting for four and there are four slots, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It ain't that hard, is it?
Not a big deal.
I can probably handle it.
Yeah.
It's another one of those volunteer things. No, but these are well-qualified people.
Oh, my heavens.
Without question, yeah.
Let's, let's take a motion in reference to all four of them, unless somebody wants to break one out.
No. I move that we, uh, um, give Eric permission to vote for all four positions on this Maine Municipal Association voting ballot, um, as, uh, for the four people running.
Okay, and, did you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Great. And then, uh, you do see future, uh, agenda items here, um, and ongoing goals and so forth.
We do have to adjust the meeting in September, 'cause you're gonna be gone and I'm gonna be gone.
Okay. Then we better, we better discuss that, right?
I'm gone on the 13th, and you're gone anyways.
September?
I thought you had scheduled that one already, but, um...
Yes, we did. It's 17th, we did the 17th.
I'm not here, so that's...
Oh, that's what you're saying.
And he's not here.
Okay, so then...
I don't know yet, actually.
I, I will say...
Still don't know.
This relates to...
I have a medical situation, that's not me, but with a parent that's being dealt with.
Relates to the scheduling and all sort of...
Whether I actually leave is a whole nother...
Get in there.
Prior discussion, uh, the, the, tentatively, the Planning Board is looking at, um, having a meeting on September 5th to do their public hearing and discussion for Bob's application. So, uh, anytime after that would be, would be wise, um, more time the better to give time for, for things to be reviewed, if they do have a recommendation, uh, to get into your packets, um, and for consideration and all of that by, by legal. So, um, just a factor that, that they may, um, and they change things periodically because of their scheduling, but they may be meeting on the 5th of September to consider that.
Well, what is the, what's that Monday after the 5th?
10.
10?
10 and 24.
I will not have left yet.
It is Rosh Hashanah, so if you don't want to meet on a high holiday...
You know, we'll give consideration to that if anybody has a concern of that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep. And so, that would open the 11th, of course, but if it's not a concern, um, we can certainly go ahead with the 10th. I, I mean, I, um, Eric, how does that affect you in preparation and so forth?
Um, it makes it a little bit tight for getting the, uh, you know, reporting done, but I think i- if it's not done then, it could be done shortly thereafter and reported at a later time. So, um, certainly can be accommodated. I don't know if that is or is not on a regular, uh, regular warrant, um, day, 'cause we do alternate every other Monday with that, but, um, at this point, it really doesn't matter. We handled one today that was, we're not, we're not on cycle for our warrants. So, um, my preference is to have it fall on that date, but it's not a requirement.
Right, okay, so, the 10th, the 10th, we would have, um, a quorum, we would have four members?
Yeah. If, if you're not gone, we'd be four people.
If I'm not gone?
If you're gone.
Right, if I'm gone.
If you're not gone, then we'd have five.
Okay.
Is that the 10th?
Yeah.
Yeah. My intent was to be gone in September, pretty much.
Gone in September, we've gone in September.
Um, so, yeah, okay, so the 10th, um, I don't think we need to do this with a vote, is that...
I, I just wanted to bring it up, so that we didn't...
Okay, so prep for the 10th.
Science delivered.
If there's a reason to, um, have some meeting on the 24th to sew up some warrants or something like that, there could be a very brief meeting.
I'll be back then.
Yeah, and I, I think that either one of those meetings...
My intent is to be back.
Yeah, so on the 10th would work.
We could do it later, but you want to take care of the Planning Board thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and I was gonna say is that the 24th could also work for that. Um, November, we need to have, Robin said, 30 days for absentee ballots, um, you know, so, I think, um, that the 24th, obviously, would also work.
Is that better for you then, the 24th?
No, I mean, I think that it's probably better to try to be more proactive, and then if we need to fall back to a later date, uh, for, you know, a second, uh, pass or any special business that might result from this, because it is a complicated issue, you may need more time.
So, the 10th is on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the select board meeting for September will be the 10th of September. Anything else in terms of business? Could I take a motion in regards to adjourning?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn.